Good evening. We will call this meeting of the City Council with the city of Lathrop Village to order, and I have asked the clerk to call the roll.
Roll call. Mayor Brock.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Garrett here. Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson. And councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This is, this portion of the meeting is one we traditionally do, which at the end of the current councils reign and the beginning of the new. So, this is a transition meeting. We usually use this brief period at the beginning to give members, already members of the council an opportunity to make any comments or remarks they wish to make, and looking back over the past year or the past term that they, we've all been a part of this council. And then we will, after that is done, adjourn this council for the last time for this year. And we will seat the new council, and the clerk will take over and run the beginning of that meeting. So, start at my far left. Is there any comments anybody wishes to make?
Yes, I wish to express my appreciation for Councilwoman Manarino Thompson. She, she's served graciously for the city of Lathrop Village. She's not here this evening because she had prior engagements, but I wanted to express my appreciation, and I also wanted to tell her that I enjoyed working with her. And we did not see eye to eye on some occasions, but she respected my opinion, and I respected hers. And that's all we ever want in this world, is to be heard and to be understood and work together. So, I wish her Godspeed and a lot of respect and a lot of luck in the coming years.
Ditto to what Ian said about Councilwoman Manarino Thompson. Has been very much inspirational to me to help me out on council. The one thing that I would say to our citizens, it's been a rough year, and some rougher than others, for some people experience more roughness than others. But I really have to say that this, going through this, this community really showed me what community means, more than anything, and how we all rallied together. And I just look forward to having our new councilman on council with us, and to move the city forward, and to continue to build what we had, and to be better than what we were before. Move forward.
Your turn.
Me?
Yes.
Well, the last two years have been very educational for me, being my first term as city council person. And Maria was just a huge help, very intelligent, very practical, and wanted to get to the point. So, I learned quite a bit from her, just from sitting next to her. I'm looking forward to the next few years together. And I agree with Kelly, just seeing the strength of Lathrop Village. When I ran, I ran because the community was such a strong community. And when we had the little hiccups, or the big hiccups this year, we really rallied together, and we stuck together. And so, I'm even more encouraged that over the next few years, that whatever job we need to do, we're going to do it for the betterment of our community. And it's just wonderful to serve you in this capacity. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I've got about a half hour. No, no, no. The, obviously, Maria Manarino Thompson is going to be sorely missed by this group. I personally chaired a small committee that tried, took her out somewhere, and tried to persuade her to run again. And for reasons of her own, she just didn't feel that was possible. But I want to personally express, having worked with her the entire time she's been on this council, how much I appreciated the fact of her wisdom, her level-headedness, her very down-to-earth, practical application of her knowledge of the law, et cetera, in helping us with our various deliberations. She was totally dedicated to this community, and for that, I want to just add my voice saying that we really appreciate and thank her for all of, that she has done during the time she served on this council. As has already been said, this has been a tough year. It's been a year that I think I have been more disappointed in than any of the times, the many years I've served on this council. To see the depths with which a small group went to, to try to discredit the hard work of the sitting members of this council, in the half-trues and absolute outright falsehoods that were expressed about how bad a shape this city was in financially, et cetera, and I think most of you who have seen the result of our audit this past year, and its broadcasting on the TV, know that the city is in strong financial shape, and that, and to the credit, and I second Mayor Pro Tem's comments, that the thing that was most encouraging to me is as this played out, was the fact that Lathrop Village citizens said, "Uh-uh. This is baloney. This is not our city. This is not how we act. This is not how we talk about each other." And to see them rally around and help encourage those who were being attacked, I think was a wonderful demonstration by our citizens. And I want to thank all of them for their, all of our citizens for their level-headed approach, and their willingness to reply in the only way that was available to them, which is the ballot box, and to elect back the members of this council that had served so well and deserved to be returned. So, with that, I will wrap up our official comments. If there's nothing else that anybody wishes to add, and...
Just one last thing.
Go ahead.
I would like to thank Team Ferguson for allowing me to sit here, so I appreciate that, and we'll hope we move forward in the coming years. Thank you.
And I also thank everybody who was kind enough to vote to return me as well, as well as our newcomer, we're going to introduce very shortly here. And again, it's a pleasure to be still here and to serve, so... Madam Clerk, do we need a motion to adjourn, or do we just adjourn, sign, and die?
We just adjourn, sign, and die.
We just adjourn, sign, and die. So, this portion of the meeting is terminated, and I turn it over to the clerk to continue from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Lathrop Village City Council of November 20th, 2017. And our first order of business would be to have the oath of office for Mr. Bruce Cantor.
Yes, of course.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say aye, but I need you to repeat your name. Aye.
Bruce Cantor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Nice.
(applause) And this is from Oakland County. Your certificate of elections, and all of the ballots have been counted, and you're official.
Excellent. Thank you.
(applause)
He's even got the nameplate.
I love it.
(inaudible).
We didn't vote.
City Council.
Oh. I was going to say, we didn't vote yet. Hold on.
I need you to repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. Frank Brock.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of, the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of...
And that I will discharge the duties of...
City council member.
City council member.
For the City of Lathrop Village.
For the City of Lathrop Village.
Michigan.
Michigan.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Why?
Why not?
And your certificate of election.
Oh, good. It's official.
How many is that?
You know, I've got to file it.
You're going to take a picture.
I took the picture. Oh, I forgot, you got to just warn them. I'm tall. (laughing) So, he has to be sworn in also. Never mind.
I need you to repeat your name. Aye.
Aye, Ian Andrew Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter for the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of city council member.
And I will discharge the duties of the city council member.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. (applause) And you give your copy as well.
Thank you.
I'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And I'd like to mention that Mr. Cantor, Frank Brock, they have the four-year terms, and Ian Ferguson, he has a two-year term. And it's indicated on their certificate of election as well. Next, we're going to have the election of mayor. Done by a paper ballot. I will pass one down to each city council person. They will choose, send them back to me, and I will count them. Now, this is for mayor. And on your ballot, it says, "Mayor, vote for one." Each one of you take one, please.
Are you coming? Someone's passing down.
Passing down. Help check. Yep. I would like to announce, we have a new mayor, Michael Garrett. Congratulations. (applause) And it was a three to two vote. For everyone to know. I need you to repeat your name. Aye.
Aye. Michael Garrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And you give your copy as well.
Thank you.
I'll be happy.
Thank you.
I'll be happy.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And I'd like to mention that Mr. Cantor, Frank Brock, they have the four-year terms, and Ian Ferguson, he has a two-year term. And it's indicated on their certificate of election as well. Next, we're going to have the election of mayor. Done by a paper ballot. I will pass one down to each city council person. They will choose, send them back to me, and I will count them. Now, this is for mayor. And on your ballot, it says, "Mayor, vote for one." Each one of you take one, please. Are you coming?
Who wants to pass them down?
Pass them down. Help check. Yep. Congratulations. (applause) And it was a three to two vote. For everyone to know. I need you to repeat your name. Aye.
Aye. Michael Garrett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter for the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And that I will discharge the duties of...
And that I will discharge the duties of...
City council member.
City council member.
For the City of Lathrop Village.
For the City of Lathrop Village.
Michigan.
Michigan.
According to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Why?
Why not?
And your certificate of election.
Oh, good. It's official.
How many is that?
You know, I've got to file it.
You're going to take a picture.
I took the picture. Oh, I forgot, you got to just warn them. I'm tall. (laughing) So, he has to be sworn in also. Never mind.
I need you to repeat your name. Aye.
Aye, Ian Andrew Ferguson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinance of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinance of the City of Lathrop Village. And I will discharge the duties of mayor.
And I will discharge the duties of mayor.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
To the, according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. (applause) The next vote will be for Mayor Pro Tem. The same process. Vote for one, and I will pass down your ballots. And then, when you're done, you can pass them back to me. Mayor Pro Tem will be Mr. Bruce Cantor. Congratulations. (applause) The next vote will be for Mayor Pro Tem. The same process. Vote for one, and I will pass down your ballots. And then, when you're done, you can pass them back to me. Mayor Pro Tem will be Mr. Bruce Cantor. Congratulations. (applause) Aye.
Aye, Bruce Cantor.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Charter for the City of Lathrop Village.
And the Charter for the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And the ordinances of the City of Lathrop Village.
And I will discharge the duties of Mayor Pro Tem.
And I will discharge the duties of Mayor Pro Tem.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
For the City of Lathrop Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Now, I will turn the meeting over to our new mayor for the City of Lathrop Village, Michael Garrett.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My brain just went completely dead to try to remember how to do all of this now. I'm going to call to order the meeting of the city council of November 20th, 2017, and ask the city clerk to take the roll call.
One moment, please. I have to fill in my blanks here.
No problem.
Roll call. Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock.
Yeah, present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
And councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And now, we'll invite all persons in the audience to join in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a consent agenda, so city council will consider the approval of the consent agenda unless there's something that someone wants to take out of it, or discuss.
No.
Yeah?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
So, move, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in, well, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. So, that passes. City council will review and consider the approval of the dispersment report. Any questions on that one? Or that's going to be the city administrator to discuss. If there's any questions.
Can I read the dispersment report? The two reports?
Yeah, that'd be great. Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. I'm sorry, that one is, let me slide to that. I get used to doing this. The first one is, maybe I do need to have paper going forward. The first one is for period covering October 1st, 2017 to, excuse me, to October 15th, 2017. And that is in the amount of $44,556.24. And the second one is from October 16th, 2017, to October 31st, 2017, in the total amount of $675,876.77. Any discussions on those?
Just one.
Your agenda.
Okay. Just a question on page 16?
Go ahead.
It's a written 16. It's a written 16 for Schooly Mitchell. I know we talked about that last month, but are we continuing to...
Yes, we have a contract with them.
And when does the contract expire?
Three years, so in two years, I think.
In two years from...
Ah, I don't want to say it was in May. So, probably, probably a year and a half now.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That'll save for me.
So, is there a motion to approve the dispersment reports?
So moved.
I have a second. Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed, so that passes. The next city council will consider the approval, acceptance of the departmental reports. Which page is the departmental report starting on? 30.
30, yeah, it's written 30.
Is there any questions on that?
Mayor, you have the DDA report, the police report, the building department report, and then the planning commission, and that's...
Thank you.
I would move approval of the departmental reports.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, there's on the DDA, and I can't find it right now, but I know we had a gentleman, Mr. Bry, I think, that came from Oakland County to talk about DDA. And just want to recommend that he does it, that he comes and presents to city council again. Just in incredible growth in that area, in terms of what DDA, Oakland County, Main Street offers, offers us. And I think that it would just be a great presentation for us. I think it's John Bry.
Yeah, John Bry.
John Bry.
I was at that meeting as well. I agree.
That can be for January, or something like that. I said that can be for January, or something like that. So, we did have a motion and second?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of accepting the departmental reports? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? So, it passes, or is approved. Now, the council invites those who wish to discuss issues not listed on the agenda to come forward. Just state your name, and your address.
I'll give you these first of all.
Okay.
And this is just a quick housekeeping thing, folks.
Okay, thank you.
Very quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Anderson.
You have to go ahead. You can give your address.
My big mouth, you know, I don't need a mic. I'm Diane Anderson, and I'm...
And your address also.
Yeah, I'm from the women's club. I'm actually in Birmingham now.
Oh, okay.
My mother's house was stolen, many of you know, which is why I'm not in Lathrop.
Oh.
And anyway, I'm here tonight about a housekeeping matter, and that has to do with the showcase. Some of you know that for the past year, I've been doing the showcase. I did it when our former recreation director disappeared to Oak Park, and it was just sitting there with no one doing it. My mom used to do it over the years, so I agreed to do it. And I've been doing it ever since. It does take quite a bit of money. The October one, for example, I put $150 into it. So, it doesn't come cheap. And when I went to do the November one, two groups had come forward, all of a sudden. And the day before, I found out it wasn't to be done. Now, that's fine, I'm writing three books, this isn't my heart's desire to do it every month. So, what I'm proposing is a housekeeping motion to make sure that this doesn't happen again. The Lions Club, just for the record, it's not their anniversary now, that was in June. And when I did the showcase in September, for that terrific night that Trina put on, about Know Your City groups, or whatever it was called, the only group that didn't participate was the Lions Club. Surprise, surprise. I actually put stuff up for them, because they refused to provide anything. So, anyway, the notion that they were denied an opportunity to participate before is nonsense. So, what I'm suggesting, there needs to be one person. I would think it would be...
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, there's on the DDA, and I can't find it right now, but I know we had a gentleman, Mr. Bry, I think, that came from Oakland County to talk about DDA. And just want to recommend that he does it, that he comes and presents to City Council again. Just in incredible growth in that area, in terms of what DDA, Oakland County, Main Street offers, offers us. And I think that it would just be a great presentation for us. I think it's John Bry.
Yeah, John Bry.
John Bry.
I was at that meeting as well, I agree.
That could be for January, or something like that. So that can be for January, or something like that. So we did have a motion and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of accepting the departmental reports? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? So it passes, or is approved. Now, the council invites those who wish to discuss issues not listed on the agenda to come forward. Just state your name. And your address.
I'll give you these first of all.
Okay.
And this is just a quick housekeeping thing, folks. Very quick.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Anderson.
And give your address.
I'm Diane Anderson, and I'm...
And your address also.
Yeah, I'm from the Women's Club. I'm actually in Birmingham now.
Oh, okay.
My mother's house was stolen, many of you know, which is why I'm not in Lathrop. And anyway, I'm here tonight about a housekeeping matter. And that has to do with the showcase. Some of you know that for the past year, I've been doing the showcase. I did it when our former recreation director disappeared to Oak Park. And it was just sitting there with no one doing it. My mom used to do it over the years, so I agreed to do it. And I've been doing it ever since. It does take quite a bit of money. The October one, for example, I put $150 into it. So it doesn't come cheap. And when I went to do the October, the November one, two groups had come forward, all of a sudden. And the day before, I found out it wasn't to be done. Now, that's fine, I'm writing three books, this isn't my heart's desire to do it every month. So what I'm proposing is a housekeeping motion to make sure that this doesn't happen again. The Lions Club, just for the record, it's not their anniversary now, that was in June. And when I did the showcase in September, for that terrific night that Trina put on, about Know Your City groups, or whatever it was called, the only group that didn't participate was the Lions Club, surprise, surprise. I actually put stuff up for them, because they refused to provide anything. So anyway, the notion that they were denied an opportunity to participate before is nonsense. So what I'm suggesting, there needs to be one person. I would think it would be the recreation director, doesn't matter who it is. But there needs to be one person only that coordinates the showcase, no matter who's doing it. And as you can see, I'm just suggesting that in May of every year, every community group is approached and said, "Do you want to do one?" And if they do, fine, and we record it, so we don't get into this kind of a mess ever again. Then I'm suggesting that there are three months that should be designated. I think it's very important that February is Black History Month, and nobody tampers with that. I did a pretty good one this year, and we got a lot of good feedback from it. The second one, the summer one, some of you would have noticed, was our big advertisement. We had stuff about the food truck, and the, well, all the things I've listed here, the farmer's market, the stroll, all that kind of stuff. And it makes a good, permanent place for people to focus on and see what's happening. And finally, I think it's important that December, not in a religious sense, in a secular sense, like we did last year. But it is the month of peace on earth, goodwill toward men. And to be celebrating the 76th anniversary of the bombing of Pearl Harbor, as opposed to what we did last year, I don't really think that's appropriate. So I'd simply be suggesting these things, so that there's one person coordinates it. If the groups want to do it, terrific. And that we have three months that are just designated months that you don't tamper with, starting with Black History Month. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll give that over to you. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to be heard tonight? Is there something I want to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say something unrelated to what we just discussed. But I just want to extend my appreciation to Mr. Frank Brock for his devoted service to Lathrop Village. I really appreciate working with you over the last two years, and I've learned a lot from you. And I really believe that the citizenry here, and the ones that will be watching this, you know, will, you know, voice my sentiments. You've gone above and beyond the column duty for the city. And you've just, you've been a true councilperson for me and everybody else sitting here, including Bruce. You know, you've extended a hand to him. And when we, when we were campaigning out there, it was, we were just having a good time. And I got to know you that day, and I just want to let you know that I've learned a lot from you. And I'm happy that you're still here, so I can continue to learn from you. So, I appreciate you, thank you.
I guess I was saving that towards the latter part, but since you jumped in there...
I'm sorry.
But, you know, now I see, okay. And so I will concur, I am, I'm still a little, I guess the right word is to say a little bit in shock, really. And it is, you have been a mentor to me. And I swear you did, you did teach me how to do all of this, where I'm just right now, I can't seem to remember anything. My brain just went dead on me. But I look to you as family, as, you know, with you and Jenny, and of course David, silly enough to mention him. But it has been my pleasure, I've learned a lot from you. And I really appreciate everything that you have done for me, and you have gone above and beyond, probably more than most people even know, for me. And I really look to you for guidance. This is, this, I have to take this one. So I appreciate it. And so now that Ian opened it up, and I spoke, feel free, anyone else can just go ahead.
I'm looking forward to learning a lot from you. Because I've got a lot to learn. And actually, as we were sitting here, since we took the vote, I was thinking, today I drove down 12 Mile Road, and I noticed, actually for the first time, that there is a James Smythe Road there, that was named in honor of the principal, actually my principal, when I went to Southfield, Lathrop. And so I've just been sitting here thinking, well, this is what we're saying, we've got to do something. And so I don't know if I'm allowed to make a proposal, but if I do, I'd like to propose that we name the street in front of, in front of the city hall, just north of the building, after front.
Just thought, don't call it Frank Brock Memorial.
How about Frank Brock Way? Something like that. So to honor, honor the 25 years of great service that you've had as our mayor. I think something like that is better.
Well, I just want to say, it is an honor, still, to work with you. And your knowledge, I don't, I don't think that, like someone mentioned already, that we really realize the depth of the knowledge and resources that you have. And just really appreciate who you are, and what you've done for the city. It's in good standing, you know, we're financially set, and that was under your leadership. And so, thank you. Thank you very much.
I forgot to tell you, it's all my money.
It's not your money. But it was under your leadership, and very grateful. Everybody knows you out there, too, by the way. So you have made a great name for Lathrop, so thank you.
Was there anything else that anyone wanted to say? Sure?
You better get back on script.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, okay. So now we are going to, are we doing this for zoning boards of appeal for CDBG?
Yes, public hearing for CDBG.
Okay, so then it's a public hearing for the 2018 CDBG program. And so that is where, anyone wants to have a comment towards the CDBG? No? Okay. I'll have to open the, I'm sorry.
You need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm working through this, okay? I'm working through it. So I need a motion to open the zoning board of appeals.
So it's just a, it's a public hearing of the City Council, sir.
Of the City Council. Motion? No? I opened.
You did open it.
It's open.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so now, does anybody want to have anything, questions, or concerns about the 2018 CDBG program?
Okay, I'll give a brief explanation. Yearly, we come, or you, with an application for the Community Development Block Grant Program, which funds our senior programs for the city. Senior T's, senior Christmas events, senior trips, senior exercise programs. And that money comes from Oakland County. So officially, we have to have a public hearing. It's been published in the paper. And the application is due back to Oakland County by December 15th, before 4:00 p.m.
So now, somebody would like to?
Yeah, so if anyone would like to make a public comment, you're more than welcome to do so.
Anyone? So now I can close the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close the public hearing for the 2018 CDBG program. So now, first on our action item, it's going to be, the City Council will consider a resolution for the CDBG program in the year 2018. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Is, as I stated before, now we have to do a resolution. That's a part of the application that has to be returned to Oakland County. And before you, City Council, I have the resolution. And the city allotment, which is $6,830, is the entire allotment for the senior service program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone want to give a motion?
I'd move adoption of the resolution for the use of the 2018 CDBG funds.
Second.
It's been, you got a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it's been accepted? Passed. Next, we, so for the next one, we have a tabled item, which is the motion to purchase the Civic Plus Recreation. City Attorney, do we have to take it off, or do we have to put it back on as a?
If the council's not going to take any action on it tonight, due to the fact that we need to do some more legal investigating into the status of our contract, I would suggest just leaving the item on the table and moving on to the next agenda item.
Okay. So then we'll skip down to the consideration of the motion to approve emergency roadwork on Lincoln. That would be the city administrator?
Yes, ma'am. We had to have some emergency work done on Lincoln. Our street was, had chunks of concrete coming out of it, or asphalt. And there was a car that went down Lincoln, and the bottom was taking out the muffler system of the car. So it was something that needed to be done before the winter. And with them closing the asphalt companies and things like that for the season, it was an emergency purchase that was over my limit, but I had to make that purchase. And I'm asking council for their forgiveness now, to waive the bid process, because we use the same company we used for our road pro, program for the summer, two roads that we did. Because they were already bonded, they were already had their insurance and everything. So I'm asking that you waive the bid process, and you okay the work not to exceed $22,340. For the emergency payment, that would work.
So, have a motion?
I make a motion that the bid be waived for the emergency payment repair on Lincoln Drive, and the amount not to exceed $22,340.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, this traffic control section at the bottom here.
Because it's a major thoroughfare.
Yeah, thoroughfare.
Yeah, thoroughfare, they had to block it off.
Oh, so they're, oh, this is the charge to block it off? So barricade on each side, or?
Well, to stop the traffic. They had to divert the traffic during that time.
Okay.
For them to fix it.
Wouldn't you say this, this already started, or was this?
It's done.
Oh, it is done.
It's already done.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
I get the whole forgiveness thing.
If we voted against this, we're in big trouble.
I see.
Please don't.
I'm just asking the question.
That's okay.
I should say that, enter into the administrative...
Okay, we had a motion that's been seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion pass. So, you're forgiven, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the City Council will consider a motion to appoint two new members to the Board of Review.
Yes.
City Administrator.
Mayor and Council. We had one of our board members step down after the July Board of Review. I do have a December Board of Review coming up, and I only, I have one member, I have two other members that do not participate in the Board of Review as much as they should. So I need to get some steady people on there. So I'm asking that we appoint Mr. Michael McClanahan, who is here today, and Mr. Alfred, Leonard Alfred, to join the Board of Review for me. And Mr. McClanahan is here, Mr. Alfred could not make it this evening, so.
Do I have a motion to, for the appointments to the review, Board of Review?
I make a motion to appoint the two applicants to the review board committee.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Mr. McClanahan, would you like to speak?
Not really. I'll save that for the text.
Okay. Okay, well, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passed. Congratulations. Okay, and the vast action item is, the City Council will consider appointments to various boards and commissions, being more specific, that's going to be for the, which ones for? Oh, for the Planning Commission?
Playing Commission, Recreation Advisory.
Parks and Recreation and DDA, right?
Not the DDA.
For Community Foundation.
Community Foundation, yep. City Administrator, if you want to explain what is open?
We, during the study session, the council discussed the various boards and commissions, and they have decided which members they were appointing to the board. Boards, the Planning Commission, they had talked about appointing Mr. Bruce Cantor to that one. The Recreation Advisory Board would be Mr. Ian Ferguson. The Lathrop Village Community Foundation will be the mayor and Donna Stallings, Councilwoman Donna Stallings.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion, please, to accept all of the new appointments?
So moved.
Second. So moved and seconded, any discussion?
We have one open, right? One, one position that's open.
The, the foundation can have two council members and the mayor on it, if another council member would like to join it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations to everyone that's on the new board and commission.
Why are you looking at me when you? You'll find out.
We'll talk later. We won't tell you right now.
We'll do cold condolences when we see you next time.
Right, so that's it for the actions. City Administrator, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, I do not, not at this time.
Okay. City Attorney?
Just briefly, I did attempt to, I don't know if I got it in during the study session or not, we were running tight on time there. But the state has updated its minor and possession of alcohol statute. So it is time for us to amend our local ordinance to reflect the changes in the state law. Big highlight summary of that is that it used to be a misdemeanor offense, first offense, if someone under 21 is caught either consuming or in possession of alcohol. The state has decided to decriminalize that, which means making the first offense a civil infraction. So, second subsequent offenses will still be misdemeanors, but that first offense, that will just be a civil infraction. But one downside to that is that that will get reported to your driving record. So, parents, make sure you tell your kids, it's going to raise your insurance if they get caught. So that, the council will see that next month. I have the updated language, we just, we'll get it in front of council and update our ordinance. That's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. City Council, is there any unfinished business or new business that you would like to discuss that was going to happen now?
Just, just one observation, so the gentleman at the end of Lathrop Boulevard and 11 Mile Road, where 696 is, where the construction zone is, I call it the construction zone, because that's what it looks like. I believe that we should put up a fence, the same type as Michigan First, just so the debris will not blow into his yard.
The supervisor on the project has been in touch with the homeowner there, and they have been contacted, they've been talking back and forth, so.
Okay.
So the actual supervisor is going to put something up?
He's been talking to the homeowner, so.
Okay, that's good. Okay, can we get a follow-up?
Ken has, our building, Ken has talked, would you like to stand up, Ken, and?
Make yourself seen.
Ken has talked to, or tried to get ahold of the builder in that, you know more about this.
I've been in somewhat regular contact with the, with the foreman of that project. And part of the project includes building a wall in the first place to separate the house from the townhomes. And the request from, I think it's, you know, I can't remember the man's name, but I'm not going to speak, the homeowner asked that the wall be built first, rather than last.
Yeah.
And, and last, my last contact with the foreman was that they would see what they could do, he said it would be favorable, probably do it. But I haven't heard in the last couple of weeks if that's going to go forward.
Okay.
So that the wall, but a wall is different than what you're talking about regarding Michigan First, that was much larger, much taller. The wall would be five feet tall.
Yes, yes.
A screen would be probably something like eight feet.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I don't, we're talking about just the wall, I haven't approached them about putting up a screen.
Okay.
So if that's something you'd like, I guess we could ask them, I, I mean, it hasn't, that hasn't, that didn't enter my conversation with the foreman.
We need a stopgap there, because the way that construction is going, they're milking it out, basically. They're, they're creating a parking lot.
It's taken a long time.
Yeah, and it's not moving, well, it's moving slowly. But if you could ask them that?
Sure, I'll follow up with that.
And just report back, I would, I would really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I actually need to talk to the owner, just to let him know that, you know, we're working on it.
Sure. Or maybe he watches the meetings.
Yeah, probably. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, Al?
I have one thing. I want to thank everyone that participated in the coffee hour last month. I want to thank everyone that participated in the coffee hour last month. The Business to Community, it went very well. We had, without knowing that it was a gap, we had about 35 to 40 businesses here, and so we're going to do it again in December, December 16th, Business to Community, Community Meet Business, Coffee Hour, and there will be some of the businesses, we're bringing, be bringing items for you to shop for Christmas. We're going to call it the Shop, you know, Lathrop Evening. And so I just want to, want everybody to mark December 16th, 6:00 p.m. downstairs, Business to Community. The businesses are really coming together now from, from that particular meeting, and we have a little strategy going. Sam Sernow will be here, he will talk about what he's doing, and answer questions for you. Michigan First will be here to talk, and it should just be, I'm just looking at this as another step of bridging the businesses and the community together. So please come December 16th, at 6 o'clock, right here.
At 12:00 down there?
I mean...
That's a Saturday, Donna.
Wait, wait, wait. What did I say?
You said the 16th.
December. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm having another function, December 16th. December the 12th, woo, thank you, December 12th, December 12th, Tuesday, December 12th, right here. So come on out and meet the businesses. We have some great businesses here in the city of Lathrop Village, and we're going to be hearing more and more about it. DDA is going to work with us, so that's all. But thank you for correcting me. I have another function.
Do we, I think Trina has an event going on in December. Is that the week, the week before, or...
It's, hers is December 2nd.
The 2nd, okay.
The 2nd, and they're going to be Christmas tree lighting, December 2nd.
Okay, okay.
We should have mentioned that, I'm glad you said that.
Okay, because I, I want to get the dates right, okay.
Madam Mayor, I just want to thank everyone who came out on Election Day to vote. I really appreciate it. We had 1,181 people to vote between precinct one and two, and our absentee voting. So I really appreciate everyone coming out to cast their vote. And also, I'd like to say a special thank you to all of the precinct workers. We have an AV board chairperson here, front row, blue sweater, here tonight. Thank you. Thank you all for everything. Our votes and everything was approved by the Oakland County Board of Canvassers the next day. So you guys rock. Thank you, thank you very, very much. And also, I appreciate, I wanted the chief of police to know, I don't know if he's still here, but I want a special thank you for Sergeant Zhang. He helped me out tremendously on Election Day. Someone delivered their ballot to Southfield City Hall, instead of here, and he went out and picked it up for me, and I really, really appreciate it. So I want to say thank you to all, and have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Yeah, Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And then, one is, we had the, Community Foundation had Notorious here Sunday. I don't know if a lot of people knew about it, but it was an absolute fabulous turnout, and I would really, hopefully, they will do it again. It was just a nice evening I was on Sunday. And so just a shout out to Vanessa for putting that together. Is there anything else? I know, I don't have any correspondence or anything thus far. Since there's no further business coming forward, or we don't have anything else, then I would take a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good night, Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.